Main Street Oregon City Board. And we're gonna have a roll call, but we're gonna call it introduction. So as people introduce themselves in the roll call, if you'd say who you are. And I'll start with our city recorder and work from the left to the right.
Nancy Ein.
City Recorder.
City Recorder. Terry Powers, former president of Main Street Oregon City.
You.
Good evening, I'm Tim Tofti, I'm a local property owner and I'm a local.
Carol Polly, Oregon City Commissioner and on the Main Street Board.
Betty Mamo, Oregon City Commissioner.
Doug Ginn, Lake Mayor.
Rocky Smith, Commission President.
Kathy Ross, Just a Plain Commissioner.
Paul Culp, the current President of Main Street Oregon City.
Ethan Erickson, the Downtown Community Coordinator for Main Street Oregon City.
Mike Gavazza, Treasurer of Main Street Oregon City.
David Frazier, City Manager.
Eric Underwood, Economic Development Manager, Oregon City.
We'll go ahead and introduce the audience this time. Tom.
Tom O'Brien, Co-Chair for Western Farm.
Karen Moore, Oregon City Chamber of Commerce.
Phil Wilrock, Citizen, just Citizen.
Plainsis. Very good.
Lloyd Purdy, Director of Main Street Oregon City Incorporated. And if she shows up, Sue Stein from Stein Oil and a Main Street Oregon City Board Member, Liaison to the Chamber will join me in this spot when she gets here.
Very good. Who wants to start out, Eric?
I'll start it off.
Good.
Kick things off here. Well, I'd like to welcome the Main Street Oregon City Board to the joint work session. This is, I will remind you that this is part of your goal that you set for, or one of your objectives that you set in Goal Two at the beginning of the year, is to continue to interface with the Main Street Oregon City Board. Lloyd and I have been doing that throughout the year very successfully, I think. I think Lloyd would agree with that. But just wanted to give you a couple, you know, go down the list of a few things that we've been coordinating on throughout the year, and Lloyd will highlight or enforce those later in his presentation with additional ones, items of coordination. So some of the things that we've been coordinating on throughout the year, we've been working together on the criteria. On the Adaptive Reuse Rehab Grant Program, I've been working with them to get feedback from the initial draft, just to kind of move forward, and so just kind of vetting that through the community and seeing if we were on the right track. We coordinated on various tours downtown with developers and outside agencies to market Oregon City, teaching them about all the wonderful things that are going on downtown. We worked with, we coordinated to work with Metro leveraging $120,000 of their funds to augment our urban renewal programs that we have in strategic locations, so they've identified some areas of downtown where they thought they would get the most benefit for their money with those projects. And we've been coordinating the Land of Opportunity Campaign. You may have seen, well, I'm sure you've seen the signs by now, 12th and Main, 10th and Main. And we, Lloyd and I meet weekly, and we try to keep each other up to date on the happenings around downtown, stay on the same page. So if there aren't any questions at this point, I think Lloyd has a presentation he's gonna give, and I'll just turn it over to him.
Thanks, Eric. I'm gonna move up to this computer so I can do that. So this is on. This is a downtown orientation PowerPoint. I give it when I can to every new business owner that comes into downtown. When we have new property owners, I try and get in front of them and share this presentation with them. Most of the board members have all been through this. Those that haven't are gonna get, the new ones who haven't yet done it, we'll see it tonight. It's something we do as part of our capacity building for downtown. In fact, last year, I think led by Terry Powers, I think we did four or five of these Welcome Downtown orientations, where we invite every business owner, every stakeholder that wants to, to come join us for a morning discussion, coffee, and knish. No, knish is here, unfortunately. Anyway, a little discussion and an orientation, this presentation, and then some Q and A. So some of you, about half of you have seen some of this, some of its new. I'll start now with a Welcome to Downtown. So picture yourself located somewhere in downtown. We're on the edge now, but put on our downtown hats. I start with some statistics and facts, facts about downtown, downtown by the numbers. Our downtown in Oregon City has the potential to tap into a trade area of almost a half million people. We are on the southeast edge of the Portland Regional Market. We also are a gateway to the Lamont Valley and to the rest of Clackamas County, so we could be serving a much larger trade area than we are. If Sue Stein comes in, and I'm back to her, would you point her to that seat? Thanks. Rough count, we have more than, at this point, more than 188 businesses at 175 locations in downtown. That's Fifth to 15th Street. That's kind of a concept for downtown. It's a walkable community where if you were to stand in the corner of, say, 10th and Main, walk five to 10 minutes in any direction, either you're gonna fall into the water or hit a bluff, but if you go north to south, you're gonna be in a very walkable pedestrian-oriented downtown. That's kind of the parameters loosely of a successful downtown. This number, 800 full-time employees, is approximate. We lost some employees with downtown when the mill closed. We've been adding back in. Every time we have a business open up downtown, we're adding not just one new business owner, we're usually adding three or four employees. So the equivalent of 800 full-time employees come downtown every day to work. That's a latent market we have for downtown services, like our restaurants, coffee shops, copy and coffee shops, things like that. We are, I know we're all excited to see that, at this point, 46 new businesses have opened downtown since we started counting. That's two new openings for every one closure. Every business, you've heard me say this before, and it's true, every business has a life cycle. Entrepreneurs decide to sell their business, or locate, or retire, or close. The good news is, we've seen two openings for every closure. This includes restaurant, retail, professional services, the whole gamut. On average, at least over the last four years, and Main Street Oregon City was created four years ago last month, we've seen a million dollars a year about in private investment in property. So every year, we're seeing the private sector, property owners, developers invest about a million dollars in new property. That's very exciting. Of course, you all know that we're proud to be partners with the city on other resources and bringing them into the city and into downtown. The streetscape was completed, a two-year streetscape improvement project that includes the two-way conversion. That was $2.5 million of somebody else's money, some federal and some state funds, but not city funds, to do some nice streetscape enhancement and improvement downtown. Something that's near and dear to my heart, and this number includes what we've done and what we will be doing, with that National Endowment for the Arts Grant to light the elevator, plus the Lamont Compass, plus the Singer Falls, both lighting and the artwork. We've seen, at least by end of 2013, we will have seen $270,000 in public art brought into the marketplace. That has a big impact on changing the vibe and the feel and the environment of our 166-year-old downtown. I'm gonna move forward a little more quickly. We know that ridership is increasing. Last count I had, there were about 12,000 people a month using the elevator. You all know, because I know the mayor has shared it with us, those are on the rise, probably because we have more activity happening downtown. TriMet, about 8,000 visitors a week come through downtown on a TriMet bus. Clackamas Courthouse brings, and you've heard me say this number before, 5,000 visitors downtown each week, and they're not all in handcuffs. There's lawyers, professionals, people getting married.
That's good.
Yeah.
We want them to have their wallet.
Right. And those become, much like our downtown employees, the latent, the latent demand for downtown services and goods. The courthouse is a, in one sense, a business that attracts customers to downtown. The Arch Bridge is back open.
Yes.
Bringing back 14,000 cars a day. The good news is, even with the two-way Main Street and all those changes, it's working. Very good traffic counts, just, we haven't, the city hasn't counted yet, but we're seeing really good traffic flow up and down Seventh, because Seventh is now two-way as well as Main Street. The good news is, once that bridge opened, there wasn't a big congestion at that intersection. It's, the traffic circulation is working. And I'm hearing from visitors, in fact, I was at an Optimist Club meeting, Ethan and I were at an Optimist Club meeting a couple weeks back. Categorically around that table, those community volunteers were excited that the two-way was working. So that's good news. A challenge for us is the 40,000 drivers a day, a day, who pass by downtown. I like to say they pass through downtown. They're passing by on 99E. We'll get into this later. Maybe there's ways to capitalize on that better, because those are people that don't see the best side of Oregon City, and they certainly don't see the best side of downtown. But it's an opportunity. This number needs to be updated, but the relationship, the proportions are fairly accurate. This is the downtown marketplace. We have still government and nonprofit operations downtown, and that's good for downtown to have a civic component like the courthouse, like the county corrections. We have a small and increasing group of both restaurateurs and retailers, and part of our effort is to grow that, peg the segment of the pie, the blue and the red.
Could I interrupt you a minute before you go on the professional office? Of course, I'm sure a lot of them have to do with the legal profession associated with the courthouse. Do you, you know roughly beyond that, how that partitions out into those that provide services to the courthouse and those that are different?
Good question. Court, direct court correlation versus insurance agents, CPAs.
Right.
I don't know how that breaks out.
Okay.
In employment numbers, I know maybe that, nah, I could, I could look into that. I will look into that for you.
Okay.
And then service providers. That's different than the professional offices, different than the retailers. These are, it's a big group, mechanics, hair salons, anybody who's not running a restaurant, retail, or a professional office, yet still thrives in a downtown environment, doing some level of retail-like activity. They need first-story, first-floor access. That's the service provider. This is the, to date, the vision for a more vibrant downtown. It's a vision that four different Boards of Directors of Main Street Oregon City Incorporated have endorsed. In fact, two different boards worked really hard to come up with a meaningful vision statement. I'm gonna read it out loud so we can hear it and read it and internalize it. It should probably begin with, at least, "Main Street Oregon City Program sees, in the future, downtown Oregon City as a thriving and vibrant mix of unique businesses, civic institutions, activities, restaurants, and housing that attract local citizens and visitors and future residents and businesses to relocate into the area. We see downtown as the heart and soul of our community. It's a downtown that connects us with each other, to our heritage, and to the Portland metropolitan area." You know, that's something we aspire to be. There's some things here that aren't happening now that we want to see happen in the future.
That doesn't mean we're part of Portland Crepe, does it?
Yeah, no, I think we're distinctly not part of Portland Crepe in downtown Oregon City. But we're certainly part of a greater marketplace. This is the current Board of Directors. Every year, Board members either rotate off. Some of them can renew if they're not term limited, if they're interested and if they're qualified. But this is with the City Commission, these are your colleagues for this discussion that you see seated around you. Paul Culp is an entrepreneur and the owner of Super Genius, and I'm proud to say an award-winning, a state-recognized, award-winning startup company. Tim Tofti, downtown property owner. Barbara Orton, who couldn't make it, is a business owner and a property owner. Mike Gavazza, business owner. My format got off here. Sue Stein, thanks for joining us, Sue, is a business owner in this city and our liaison to the Chamber of Commerce. Carol Polly, business owner and Commissioner. Jared Justice couldn't be here tonight. He's our liaison to a large employer group for downtown, which is the legal community. We've been working for probably a year to find someone to fill that role for us, and I have good hopes, high hopes for Jared Justice. He's in McMinnville at court tonight, couldn't join us. Sal, we've often met before, and our newest employee, Ethan Erickson, who will be coordinating marketing and outreach for us. So that is the people, volunteers, at this point, behind the 2013 Main Street Oregon City. This group will grow partners, will grow other volunteers, and we always bring more resources, human resources, to our projects, but this is the core group for 2013. So the nice thing about the Main Street program is we follow a four-point approach. Both the state and the national trust accredit and say, "This is a good business model to use for a nonprofit." Four points: organize, promote and market, design and preserve, and develop economy. Let me delve into what that really means for us here in our program. We organize by building consensus and cooperation among groups, stakeholders, that have a stake in downtown. So working with the Rotary Club to do public art at the Singer Falls, working with the Trick and Racy Car Club to do a downtown car show, working with, they haven't needed it, but working with the Chamber to help produce an antique fair, you know, downtown is the host to that event. We would be there as a partner if needed. So we're always building partnerships, as Eric pointed out, working with Metro to help attract $120,000 in extra money for downtown revitalization, working with the state through grants to fund projects. We're at our best when we're building partnerships, like the one we have with Oregon City. Promote and market. We do a lot of PR, a lot of paid advertising, a lot of grassroots marketing promotions like special events, to raise awareness that downtown is not the same place it was four years ago. It's a friendly place, it's a safe place, it's got unique businesses that are making it a more interesting place to work, live, and visit. Design and preservation, we focus on, because we're not a historic district, though we're 166-year-old historic downtown, we focus on, one, getting the streetscape improved, which we've had some success with, although there's more work to be done in the north part of downtown, working with property owners, so they're improving their buildings. So that's the design, that's the placemaking, that's the physical component of what we try and do to energize that system. And developing the economy, that's economic development. We focus on entrepreneur recruitment, finding the new entrepreneurs that are willing to come into downtown and open their business, employ anywhere from two to 15 other employees, and make the downtown marketplace a better place for a wide spectrum of business, retail, restaurant providers, professionals, creative entrepreneurs. That's what we like to do. We gotta do it by helping bring in funding to downtown projects, because there's limited funding for everything that needs to be done in a community, in a city, and in a downtown, promote downtown actively, communicate and tell others about what we're doing, and then cultivating capacity, building partnerships. You know, this kind of sums it up. Here's how we have success with downtown. Creating projects and putting funding, and finding funding to support them, promoting downtown, communicating successes, and building partnerships and capacity. Let me move through this quickly, because it's not the individual numbers that matter, it's the sum total at the end. And the city has been a partners, partner with us in helping bring in a lot of money for programs and success into downtown, because it's expensive to do a streetscape improvement. It's expensive to do public art, it's expensive to restore and renovate old buildings and find new uses for them. So the number's a little bit higher by now, but we shall have a smile on our face and be pleased that we're seeing an economic impact in our community, because we're bringing in outside resources. A lot of this is grant-driven, a lot of it's not city-grant-driven, but other partners. As I said, we also do promotions. This is an instance where we worked with the Three Rivers Arts Guild to start two years ago, an art walk, a First Friday series, with some expertise like Ethan's on hand. We may be able to bring that event back. The First City Celebration, this is an event every year that evolves into something different. Last year, it was a street festival. This is something we always try to find new partners with to introduce downtown to residents who have forgotten about downtown, or visitors from outside the area. The Downtown Cruise and Car Show, a partnership of ours with the Trick and Racy Car Club. It's probably been the surprise hit of the calendar year, downtown for three years now. I don't know if they're gonna be able to fit every car that wants to show up this year, but the Car Club certainly wants to do another event. The Farmers Market, we don't have a lot of input or coordination in the Farmers Market, because I've seen them doing pretty well, though I know it was through discussions with the City Commission and some of us had three years ago, that enticed them to come downtown for the Saturday Winter Market, which was one of the first in the Portland region, and the Wednesday afternoon markets. So I'm proud to see we had at least a small role to play in making that happen. We work on beautifying downtown. We work with property owners to take ugly facades, like you see in your upper-left-hand corner, and make it something special. At one time, we had a sign program where we helped encourage property owners to upgrade the quality of their signage. Last year, this last year, that program evolved into a lighting project, where we're hoping business and property owners light their facades, so that at night, like when we leave here, it's not so dark and scary downtown. We work with groups like the Rotary Club to do new public art. With the Lamont Compass, it was a new piece of public art.
I've seen that before. Who is that guy?
Merryweather Lewis, I think it's.
And that picture got stretched.
That's True North.
Yeah, yeah, he's facing True North, and he's a little more svelte than that. The picture got stretched. We do spend a lot of effort communicating downtown successes. A website that's fairly passive, people have to go to that to find out what they're doing. We also send out almost weekly downtown update emails to stakeholders, probably twice a week. I, and recently even Ethan, go door-to-door and post a letter on every business owner's storefront, so that when they come in in the morning, they get an update about something that's relevant to them. Newsletters, we do a, probably twice a year, a State of the Street newsletter update. Those are in the red packets, and I usually drop off a handful for the city and commissioners too. So we spend some time making sure those that want to be informed can stay up to date. We have some pretty good success, not just bringing in funding to revitalize downtown, but gaining recognition from around the region and the state. One of our volunteers, Laura Rambo, won the state's first ever, this was in 2010, the first ever Volunteer of the Year Award from the state's downtown revitalization program. That was exciting. That was the same year we won an award for the Entrepreneur Recruitment Campaign, Blue Collar Creative. That award also, that program also won a Silver Telly Award. As I mentioned, we're excited to have Paul Culp amongst us. He won the Business Success Story of the Year in 2012. That was also the year, this year, that we won recognition for the city's work on the Two Way Main Street, which was part of the infrastructure improvement project. And Rotary won an award for the Singer Falls artwork. Within that, you know, relevant to, say, the lighting project as well.
You missed one.
Yeah, missed one. We got some other awards. And thank you for the round of applause that you shared with me a couple months ago for that. That was touching and heartwarming. Thank you. This is a pretty good slide. It speaks to our success. When we build partnerships, and the city's, the city logo's there too, because you're one of our best partners, when we partner for success, we are much more likely to find that success. These are some of the entities and organizations we've partnered with over the past couple years to make downtown a more vibrant place.
What's that little car down there?
That's the Trick and Racy Car Car.
Who are you hanging out with? Well, yeah. I love it.
It's not a Portland State icon.
You know, we also helped through things like a downtown dialogue, which is just the name I use when we gather people together to talk about downtown issues. Something we've talked about maybe two or three years ago now, was how do we explore redevelopment and new build downtown? This is just a concept and image of what could happen on a piece of public property. This was done with the support of the city and Metro. And it doesn't matter if you like the colors and the style, the intent here was to show something could happen and tie it back to economics. There was an economic analysis and a concept plan that says, "Hey, something could happen in this downtown on a site like this." We've also partnered with Metro on adaptive reuse, and you see some of this coming to fruition. This was a focus at, in fact, one part of the Bush property, and it was to say, "How could you infill that for residential?" Or, "How could you adaptive reuse?" So they have a plan that helps them think about the value of their property as an investment. This was done in collaboration with Michelle Reeves, who most of you have met, and, you know, is excited about downtowns throughout the area as well as our downtown. You know, we see other examples of, yeah, you know, dreaming maybe, dream sheet, long time, but this is the type of development we are seeing in other downtowns. Milwaukee has higher-density residential happening in their downtown. Again, this is a modern, currently, you know, an architect that has some different design standards or ideas, but it's showing that we could be thinking about this type of development in our downtown core, or just outside of that core. In fact, this is 12th and Main, you all have seen this photo before. So you can tell this slide's out of date, because I last updated it in 2011, and this is my summary slide. The things in blue are new, well, they're all new projects, but new special events and marketing programs in blue that we have introduced into downtown, and other successes that I'm pleased to share with you all, and this just summarizes that. I'm gonna wrap, we're wrapping up this phase so we can get into more discussion about moving forward. It's important to move forward from a foundation. I like the fact that there's lots of surpassed notes next to these goals. A year and a half ago, the 2011-2012 Board of Directors set some ambitious goals, some goals I didn't think we could even come close to. They said, "Let's set a goal of seeing a building restored and repurposed downtown." And we've seen that, we've seen two of those happen now in the past year. So we've surpassed that. Two new restaurants. We've seen that happen, a bakery and a El Compadre, and we have the new Nibula coming online, so I'm gonna count that halfway. It's moving in the right direction. We've surpassed that goal. Two new retail businesses. We've seen things like OC Sports relocate from out of downtown into downtown. We've seen the Bike Shop, Versity Cycles come on, we've seen some others as well. We've surpassed that goal. And when I say "we," I mean downtown. Main Street Oregon City really has a very limited role to play in what a property owner does to their building, what they price it at, who they use to, as a real estate agent. But, you know, we had some role to play in making downtown a worthwhile place for these business owners to start up their businesses. In progress, the elevator, it was a firm goal a year and a half ago, that we find a way to take that local icon and maybe breathe new life into it and recognize it for what it is. We share the falls with the rest of the country, that's part of a national narrative. We share West Lynn, the bridge, the Arch Bridge, with West Lynn, that's part of two different cities. Oregon City's municipal elevator is solely an Oregon City icon, and this National Endowment for the Art Project will help us celebrate and feature that in a whole new way. So that project is in process. Activating our streetscape, that's facade improvements, that's special events, that's working with business owners through a Get Street Smart/Business Bootcamp series, where we train business owners who want to show up to these meetings to learn how to better retail and present to customers and to the street. We've wrapped up six months of those meetings. Things we haven't yet done, that may be too complicated or a longer-term horizon, a new project, a new build project downtown, and introduction of residential capacity. Now, those things might go together, they might not, but those are things that I think are continuing to be on the to-do list for downtown. Those are the things that will help this downtown evolve into a modern marketplace. You maybe don't have to answer this out loud, but in your mind, I encourage everybody to say, "Hey, based on what I just learned, based on the last probably 10 minutes of me sharing some successes with you, both city commissioners and Main Street Oregon City Board members, something new, something you didn't know, you know, what did you learn out of the last little PowerPoint presentation here?" And maybe that's something we roll into the next phase of this workshop, because I'm gonna turn this over. There's another question. What did you learn? And think about this as we continue the discussion, what is it about downtown that matters most to you as a business owner, as a city commissioner, city leader, as a stakeholder in our downtown? For the orientation to what's been happening now.
Thank you, that was good.
So, you know, it was requested to have a joint work session between the two boards, however, it wasn't really communicated as to what should come out of that work session. So I kind of created my own goal for this work session, and you may or may not agree. If you don't, please let me know.
Oh, we will.
Yeah, I'm sure you will. But what I think would be a good thing to take out of this work session is to have some sort of strategy, or some sort of plan going into the new year, and possibly beyond. So kind of the way we've laid it out for you this evening is, you know, we have kind of a short-term and a long-term, your visions are your objectives, your goals for our coordination, short-term being a year, within the year, long-term, two or more. And then we have the dream sheet. You know, what are some other ideas that really haven't been brought up, haven't been mentioned, something that you'd love to see that may be a long-term goal? It could be something that we don't have the budget for yet, but we might want to work towards, you know, getting it in place, getting it in place, getting everything set to achieve that. So just a far-out vision of what you So just a far-out vision of what you have. But first, before we get into that, I wanted to show you another example of our coordination work. This is, this is ongoing. This is the first part. Lloyd and I have been working together with the Land of Opportunity Campaign. We've been working with a national publication that's called Expansion Solutions, and this is especially a good publication because they don't just print your ad in a magazine and send it out in an issue. Hopefully, people will come by it. What they do is they take these issues and these advertisements, and they go to these site selector conventions, these developer conventions, all of these different venues, and try to match you up with someone who might be interested in that type of development. And they follow up with you online. We have online advertisements with Expansion Solutions as well. But working with Main Street Oregon City, this is what we've put together, and this just came out. And again, that's the first part. The second part is a two-page spread with an article about collaboration and the good things that we've done downtown. And so that will come out hopefully in the next month. So it's just another example. So is everybody okay with the goal of the work session?
Sure.
Okay, all right.
Does everybody have the, there were some, a list of topics that have been kind of pre-
Yeah, and the staff report, there's a list of some potential discussion points, possible discussion points. We've got north and infrastructure improvements, the quiet zone, off-street parking, residential development versus vertical housing tax credit. I don't think that's been talked about too much yet. The adaptive reuse grant program, storefront grant program, elevators, Lloyd mentioned, mass transit, mill development, or redevelopment, I should say, business recruitment, retention, and any other topics that you could pick up. With that, I'll just open it up to questions or discussions. If we could just start at the top of the list, if you'd like, or if you have something else you'd like to start with.
Well, I'll kick it off, if that's okay with you, Mayor.
It's okay with me.
Okay, so I appreciate this presentation, and I really appreciate all the board members being here, and it's very exciting to me to have a lot of new faces. So I'm very excited that Lloyd, you were able to bring in and keep reeling in more fishes to be on your hook. So that's very exciting to me. I think the discussion probably is, I know the city pays into Main Street for development some sorts, so maybe if you could talk about that piece, that would be good.
Okay. Main Street Oregon City is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit, so that's our corporate structure. We get revenue from fundraising from, which can take a lot of different forms. We also get a contribution from the city to help do some of the work we're doing, and in turn provides me an opportunity to do some work with the city.
Absolutely. Great partnership, by the way, I have to say. You guys are doing great with the partnership.
Yeah, so there's probably three funding sources that are the primary sources of funding for Main Street Oregon City. Fundraising we do, the contribution from the city, and the Economic Improvement District. The downtown property owners, two years ago, agreed to each pay in a certain, each pay in up to, up to $2,000. It's sometimes less than that. It's a 1% assessment on their property value. So that Economic Improvement District, which was the first one to be formed in the state of Oregon in recent memory, in the last 15 years, so that was a new venture, that was one funding stream. What that means is basically Main Street Oregon City doesn't have to do as much seeking, soliciting of donations.
Right.
It frees up about 20% of our effort and time from fundraising to focus on economic development programming. So there's a three-pronged, we still do some fundraising, but there's a three-pronged funding source for MSOC, Inc.
That's great. Thank you.
Can you tell us what your budget is?
Sure. EID funding, I don't have my exact budget numbers, so-
Just a total-
The EID generates about $100,000 a year. The city has typically made a $50,000 contribution to match that as a gesture of if the property owners are investing in the downtown program, the city wants to be a partner in that. And then fundraising is substantially less than that because we haven't, we've relied upon the EID for funding. So we're at 150, probably more like 160 or 70. That doesn't count grants where we write, where it's not part of our operational budget, like the National Endowment for the Arts Grant. That's a $100,000 grant from, from the federal government to do this art project. I'm not counting that type of project driven as our, as our budget, because that grant writing changes year by year, and our ability to attract funding changes year by year. So operating budget, just over 150,000.
Okay, thanks.
Go ahead.
Oh, I have something to add. Since we're talking about how things work, we had the board meeting today, and we welcomed Ethan Erickson, and he is a new staff member. And Ethan, can you say a little bit about what your function is and what you're going to do, because there's, you know, some growth in the organization and, you know, a little shift in kind of moving to that next level?
Hi, everybody. Thanks for having us, and this is a great meeting. I'm excited to be a part of this process. Clearly, Lloyd's been very busy for the last four years that he's been here, and it was clear to me that it was time for the capacity of the organization and the process to kind of expand and sort of divide and conquer a little bit. So I'm here as the downtown community coordinator, handling a lot of the promotions and marketing for the downtown as a community. That's going to involve helping integrate new resources and coordinate events like the tree lighting ceremony, the trick-or-treat on Main Street, although I guess that happens on its own now, or it always has. The First City Celebration will be the first major big event that I'll have to really help provide my coordination skills with. And there's a couple of products that are going to be developed. One of them is a new downtown brochure that's going to feature a lot of the businesses in the downtown area. We've got the lavender cottage area down there. She has opened up a new business, and we're now going to call that Cottage Row and make it a viable destination for people when they come down to downtown, a place they'd like to go. So what we want to do is create pockets of interest throughout the downtown so that when people do come across the bridge, they know when and where they're supposed to go to get the kinds of services that they want. So they develop their own kind of interest in the downtown. They're not just driving past or driving through. So the brochure is one, coordinating some of the events is another one, and then restaurant-retail roundtable-type discussion is something I'm working on now. I think I'm up to about 28 businesses that I've visited in the last couple of weeks and have learned a lot about, a lot of the peripheral issues going on in the downtown area. But what I'm focusing on is who's working with who, what resources do we have outside of the Oregon City area that we can begin to lean on and help raise the profile of what's going on in the downtown area? Who needs to be cross-promoting with who? Who's already doing that? What are some of the best practices out there that we can share with the other businesses down there? How can we get more creative about what we're doing? And first and foremost, how can we make the most out of the events that we do have? If the city's going to go to all the trouble to have a First City Celebration, we bring a bunch of people downtown, what then happens with all those people when they get here? Do the businesses close that day?
Yeah.
Or do they make something of the opportunity? So that's kind of the discussion that we're going to begin to kind of have in real terms with what's going on one-on-one with small cohort groups of businesses that can work together. And then the identity of the Main Street downtown. Oregon City isn't just a mill town anymore. It's going to be taking on a new, grounded in its history, and most appreciative of that, being able to celebrate some sort of new marketplace that's going on. And so how do we market that to folks outside of the Oregon City area?
That's wonderful.
Anyway, I put myself next on the keyboard. Get on if you want to, if you want to get on the floor.
Do the board members know how to get on the list if they want to-
Yeah, if you hit on the floor, if you switch, switch off the screen and get on the floor, then you're on, and Kathy, you did it, you did do it on-
I think she's on.
I'm trying to, but-
If you get on the floor, you can hit it. I don't know what those things are coordinated yet. Now she's on. Anyway, of course, the thing I'm kind of looking forward to is seeing some residential down there. And I guess I'd ask at this point, do you see anything that's, that we can be looking forward to, that you know might be occurring in that area? And how, perhaps with our adaptive reuse program, how, how do we really push it?
Sure. I have a specific mention, something to mention to you, but is there something you want to hit first on that? And I don't know if, I think this is the time to say, well, you know, maybe where does that go?
Yep.
Let's go short term.
So if that needs to go short term-
No, just kidding, just kidding. It'd be nice.
Like, maybe the identify can go on the short term.
Right now, given the rent rates, lease rates, and what's downtown, I think the problem that, problem that we've been running into with the grant is it's hard to get residential pencil right now. And it's kind of the, like, hey, who's going to start this? I think almost if we don't have something, a developer with enough money to come in and take that amount of risk to start a residential component downtown, then we're almost going to have to subsidize it to get something started. Now, my suspicion-
Just before you go on too far, the "we" is whom?
It'll have to be subsidized, how about I put it that way? The city, Urban Real Commission with their, their real agency with the grant programs or something, something to more aggressively incentivize residential, because right now on its own, with lease rates the way they are and the parking situation that's downtown, it's going to be hard to come by.
So going on that as part of the discussion, if residential is a dream at this point, something that's not a year or even three years, although it might be three years, if it's-
You need the mic.
Yeah. Okay, we'll turn it off.
Nancy keeps us on track.
If residential capacity is the term I use, if that's an important goal and priority for the city for downtown, and it's probably not a year away, and it may or may not be three years away, though it may be, you know, if we, if we put it here for a minute, I can give you two things to do in the short term that help us, pardon the sports analogy, push the ball down the field. One is something that the city would have to do, which is the vertical housing tax credit, which is their state-enabling legislation that allows a city to create an incentive program. I think it's, I think it's 20% every layer of new residential development. This is what they did in Milwaukee. This is why they have residential downtown. So vertical housing tax credit, getting that done might be a short-term goal that we all work on together. The second program or second opportunity, something I did just last week, I applied to a program through a local university to try and bring in some graduate students with a proposal that they would help us explore the idea of residential downtown. And I don't know what form that would take yet, and I don't know if they'll even like our, my request to bring in some critical young thinkers about downtown residential, but it's through a planning program, so it might be a way to, in a safe way, explore, at least academically, what does residential look like? What are the impacts? What are the costs? You know, shy of a formal, city-funded type of plan. Maybe we're not there yet. So those are, you know, two things. One thing we're already doing, trying to find partners to explore that, and one thing that we could, I'm not sure this is on, is this on? The other thing we could do would be to talk about or get done the vertical housing tax credit, which is a decision that the city commission would have to make. So those are two things that could go on.
This kind of is a follow-up, and it's something that affiliates in the audience here has brought up, is having a quiet zone down there with the, and so whether, whether that's something we can look at in either the short term or the long term in terms of the railroad crossing in particular.
The quiet zone's going to be a crucial component to establishing residential downtown.
So there's three short term-
There's three, yes. And one project that's, that we've been working on for a couple of years now, if it does get going, could serve as a catalyst for downtown residential, and that's the Cove Project. So that's kind of, you're getting, you're getting residential in that area. You're going to have that traffic in your downtown. That's going to, well, could increase some of the rents, and it could help a developer get a return on investment for residential.
And the mill, too, maybe?
The mill would be, yes.
Maybe a larger church.
Yes, absolutely. That's a great opportunity for residential.
So do you want to put up some of these short, I mean, we're just brainstorming and thinking.
Yeah.
In my mind, you've given me a chance to talk about three short, three short-term opportunities. Quiet Zone, it cost $250,000 last time we checked. A vertical housing tax credit that the city commission would have to institute as a district overlay downtown, and, and some friendly, non-scary type of exploring what that means. So whether that's through graduate students or some type of research.
So I'll put this on both, because you can get started, Quiet Zone now, in the next year, hopefully have to include it within two to three years.
Tim, I just pop that up there because you mentioned mill, mill revitalization redevelopment. I think we all know that's something to talk about, whether we're talking about it next or just get it up on the-
It needs to be on the list.
On the list?
Yes.
And I guess for some of this, meaning this is kind of what Eric and I-
Could I make a, could I make a suggestion? We're talking about short term, because we're going to enter our goal session, setting session in the next month. If we could talk about short term being actually a two-year as opposed to a, as opposed to a one-year, because this is something that we can build into our goal-setting session that I think would be more consistent with the, with the sheets that are going up there.
Are you calling on people?
Yes, I am. I've lost people, but I know Kathy Roth.
I'm sorry, I thought you already-
Kathy Roth, I think, was on.
Request yourself to speak again, please.
Request myself again?
Okay, and then I think Rocky, Commissioner Smith, President Smith was on after.
President Smith, whoa.
Thought it was Kathy Roth and President Smith.
Okay, I've got a few questions.
Good day, we're coming tonight.
I would like to know, the business owners that are on the board, what type of businesses are they in?
I'm a property manager.
Okay, so do you have an office downtown?
I do.
Okay.
On Main Street.
I run a creative technology firm.
I know where you are, okay.
I have a CPA practice on Seventh Street.
Okay, and I know where you are. Okay, was there anybody else?
We're still on.
Well, and I know who Terry is. Okay, thanks. Okay, I wanted to know that. And then when you mentioned the $427,000, or people, is that an actual count or an available number for us to draw from? Your very first slide.
The trade area is some demographics of the, you know, within a commutable distance, a 20-mile distance. I'm not sure exactly how that number was derived. It's in one of our early reports about a market analysis. We have a market analysis that helps business owners maybe think about, is the downtown the right location for them? So that's a-
It's a demographic.
Basically, it's a demographics. And it's also a chance to remind entrepreneurs and business owners that Oregon City is within striking distance of south and southeast Portland. We can be, when we're, as we grow and evolve, be big enough to expect to attract customers from that way, as well as the river, the River Valley and all of Clackamas County. That's as a regional center, which Metro calls us a regional center, this downtown in the city, that's who we should be aspiring to serve from a trade area.
Okay. I've been in my driving around lately, looking at towns specifically, well, Milwaukee, Lake Otis, we go West Lynn, Willamette, Canby. Nobody charges for parking, or at least I'm parking in places that, and I think that's a real detriment. I'm wondering what the Main Street policy- I'm wondering what the Main Street policy is on that.
Isn't that a city policy?
Yeah, it has nothing to do with me.
Right, but I want to know what their opinion is on that.
More discussion, I know I have a personal opinion, but I have always deferred to the city's plan for parking as the bible.
Is it cost-effective? Does it generate revenue? Does it cost money to have somebody do that?
I don't know at this point, but I just know I was, the one that really impressed me was, the other night I was on a weeknight over in Willamette, where there's no parking. It was packed, absolutely packed. Same thing with, went through Lake Oswego the other day, Monday morning, and it was packed. There's no parking, you'd have to pay. So I just wanted your opinion on that. And then I was, I asked how our new employee was being funded, and was told that that was out of events and publicity. And so I want to know what happens to events and publicity, now that that money's going somewhere else.
Who did you ask about that? That's not quite accurate.
Okay. What's accurate?
Yeah, what's accurate? His house, his positions.
Right, so it's funded via, the EID generates, as I mentioned, $100,000, there's contributions from the city, there's fundraising.
Right, but those monies all go into...
A checking account.
No, not a checking, accounts, you know? You get money in from the city and from the EID and all that, and they're going to go into events, and they're going to go into water bills, and they're going to go into different things. So I wanted to know where this salary is coming from, to pay for this person, because there wasn't an account for another salary.
Yeah, a year ago, Main Street Oregon City created a budget that said, we have, looking at our funding, this is what we can afford to do, and they could hire a staff line based on the funding levels that we've been expecting, receiving, had been receiving from fundraising, EID, contribution from the city, it all comes together.
Okay, so you did have it in your budget back a year ago?
Absolutely. Well, the 2012, '13 budget is six months old, but that was a budget item that the board put together.
Okay, thank you.
We have some board members that were on the board at that time, if they have any follow-up, please.
Without going into that topic...
He's next, I see.
...in great depth, I'm concerned about it as well. One, because of the quietness of your response, and second of all, the assumption that the cities can continue to contribute $50,000, and that was never our obligation as a city. So if you add the $100,000 budget, or the $100,000 from the district, and the $50,000 from the city, it was, and you know, I may be speaking for myself at this point, but it was always my impression that as soon as the district was formed, the city was going to cut back on its funding, because that's why we formed the district. You know, and when you do the math, 150, even if we call it 250, two staff people under that and programming, that doesn't pencil. So, or it's a very tight budget, so I'm a little concerned about that, because, you know, we, obviously, all of us are really adamant about the importance of downtown, but there's also a whole city. And I think the hope was that we created this district so that it would get off the ground and would build itself, while we could then move on as a city to other parts of the city. Unless I'm completely misreading that, obviously, we haven't gone through our budget process this year, but I don't, I don't think it's safe to say that that $100,000, that $50,000 is always there from the city, and I hope that doesn't affect the decisions you've made hiring people. So that's enough on that. But I want to go and just go back to this. I think, in my opinion, the residential piece is one of my biggest pieces. I think this is one of the most important things to work on, that probably take, probably the biggest job in all of this, because of the confines with the downtown itself and the railroad, you know, all the other issues. I think the possibility of the mill site, you know, we would go back to this, the, when I use the word bookends, I don't use, I don't use the Cove and the Rivers and the Mill as the bookends, I use the north end of Main Street, which is essentially where Cottage Row is, and the mill. So when I'm talking about bookends, I see those as bookends, and actually adding to the ability to then attach on to the Rivers and Cove as a later bookend, or as a piece that can join. So, I think that, in both of those scenarios, though, to me, residential seems to fit there on the bookends. One, because you're not dealing with intersections, with train intersections, in terms of the noise also, as you get to the north end, you have, you know, the train tracks go over the street, so there's not those kind of issues in coming into the mill site. So, and I think those are the places in the downtown that need the most work, or the most attention and infill. So I definitely think that we're on track with those, those in terms of the short term. I think the storefront grant has been probably, I could pretty much say it has been the, one of the only successful things that the Urban Renewal District has tackled at this point, and I'm really happy about it, because I think that history component can't be lost from the downtown. And I think, even though we don't have a historic district, it just kills me when we say that, because, you know, it is a historic district, and it should be a historic district, and there it is not. So we've lost some amazing history there. At least when the city, at least when the Urban Renewal District hands over cash, we can say how it's being used, and making sure that, as good as we can, that it's saving those buildings in some way. So I think any effort that we can continue on keeping that character is so important. Which brings me to a question that I've kind of lost track on. When we, when we started the, in the building of the Main Street program and the district, there was a huge focus on, in fact, I was on a subcommittee with maybe, I don't know who it was, someone can maybe remind you, about the design standards for downtown. That was at a commission level. It just, it kind of went away. I think it's being addressed at the Main Street level, but we haven't heard of anything about that recently, so I don't know if that is continuing on, I'm unclear as where that is. I think, I think that's a really important issue for the future, not only with the current downtown, that we're obviously spending a lot of money without really any design standards, but it's going to be even more crucial when we get to a point where we have the Rivers and the Cove, I mean, these opposed projects are all underway to some degree, but the mill site especially. I think that's the key to making these developments work, and I think it's the key to making those developments work in a way that doesn't, that retains our uniqueness as a city and its history, and I think that's so crucial. In addition to that, so I feel as a city commissioner, almost the same way I do as a teacher sometimes, we like to say, well, this period you're going to math class, and this period you're going to science class, and this period you're going to English, but none of them, none of our students really understand that they're the same classes, that the subjects are all intertwined, and they work together. We can't see these things as separate pieces. You know, we're talking about economic development, every second that Eric spends on economic development, every second that you spend Lloyd on economic development, and now Ethan should be not only about, you know, bringing businesses, but tourism. And that's the only thing, everything that we talk about should be tourism. And I've not, I've seen a struggle with the economic development piece, I've seen a struggle with the urban renewal piece, and I've seen a struggle keeping our museums open. It's the same problem. And so, when are we going to, I think the reluctance of some people in Oregon City to support some of these big projects is because there's a fear of Oregon City changing and losing its character, whatever. The way that we can bring all these projects, I think, together is under an umbrella of economic development and tourism, and I think that we can't assume that a museum at the end of the Oregon Trail is going to be successful reopening if it doesn't connect to the shopping center that's built next to it. And we can't expect the shopping center to be full of stores if it's sitting next to a museum that's closed. So, those things have to be intertwined, and I don't hear us, I hear us talking about all these little pieces, but they're never together, and I think an opportunity, once in four years, for us to sit down and talk about it is not enough. This should be something, you know, we should have at least an annual meeting with Main Street, but I think we should also be focusing, now we have some, we have some staff people. I think, you know, I've been, I haven't been kind of as vocal, because, you know, Eric's brand-new to some degree, even Lloyd, you've been here a couple of years, you know, four years, but that's still new. So now that we have a staff assembled between Main Street and even our staff, I think now we're in, we're in a perfect place to start solving those problems, and at a perfect place in this city to find out, what is the future of this entire town? Because we have all these properties available to move forward on. So I really want to see, I hope we spend time as a city talking about that, and also continuing on with Main Street. I don't, I have a couple more things. The parking issue, I think that's an ongoing issue, and, you know, I was supportive of the parking plan, and that's kind, we've kind of made some good decisions, bad decisions with that. I think, again, with tourism, you know, how we, how we focus the attention on the elevator with the project that's coming up, and really utilizing the upper part of the city for parking, and really, that marketing isn't being done enough. Okay, do you know that you can, you're actually only two blocks from the courthouse if you park up on the hill, you know? So, I think those kind of things need to be better educate, educate our visitors more on that. Some of the most successful events downtown in recent years have taken a step back in the last year, and that worries me. The Art Walk, which was a great success, died, and the First City Festival was definitely a difference from, from the big years to even the last year, which I wasn't at, unfortunately, I wasn't here that weekend. But those, both of those festivals in themselves are rebirths of festivals, of art festivals in Oregon City that also failed. And we constantly create new events to let them live a short, short life, and then they die, and then we reformat them and republizize them, and it sets a very inconsistent message, a very confusing message of how we market our downtown. And the other mixed message that we send is we have brought, we, on the, the most successful part of Oregon City was when, in terms of the arts, were when we were really focusing on Seventh Street, the Carnegie Center was the center of the city in terms of the art community, we had Arts Commission, we had a mural society, all of those went away. At the same time, the Carnegie closed, is, you know, very soon after that, the Arts Festival went away. So we've made progress bringing those back, and I actually now see us putting infrastructure and money into putting art back downtown. At the same time, we're putting money into sculptures and all these great art pieces downtown, we're losing our art festival again, to some degree, or, I shouldn't say we're losing it, but it's floundering a little bit. And at the same time, we're losing murals that have been on Main Street for decades, and we have no plan on how to save the ones that are there, and how poor shape they're in. This is why the Arts Commission is a major concern to me, or how does that work with the partnership on Main Street to, you know, it's a mixed message to spend money on new artwork, we're not taking care of the artwork that's there. And there's not any, any group or organization that kind of oversees that or helps us there. And I know there's people here that would be really interested in getting that going, so that's one thing I want to really have you think about, too. I'm trying to go fast, and I do have a lot of, I think the structure of the board is working towards that conversation about business owners versus, not, I shouldn't say versus, business owners and property owners, and making sure that that, that, that the district truly is representative of both property owners and business owners. I think you're making progress on that, but I think that's an ongoing issue that still has bugs to be worked out, and I hope that continues in terms of communication. I think the adaptive reuse thing, adaptive reuse is very promising with the residential component. And I think that's it for now, but...
I'm going to make a request, and our request is this, I mean, this is all being recorded. I think several of the things that he's brought up, somehow we need to tie into the short-term and long-term views, we're running out of time, we've got some other speakers. But I think what has to be done is to look over, look over the tapes and find out what pieces logically fit into the short-term and long-term planning. I'll make a couple of points when I come, when I come up, but first of all, we've got Terry Powers on the list. Afterwards, we're going to have Mike Gabesa on the list, so we're going to get two of the, an ex-board member, you're an ex-board member, or are you still on the board?
I am.
Okay, so we've got an ex-board member that probably has some observations, and a person that does the pressures work for the Main Street program. So go ahead. Terry, you first.
I have to say, I'm at a little bit of a loss, because that was a lot of information. So when I first requested to speak...
To me, that was just a little.
Well, I think the understanding of the scope of the meeting tonight might be different for some people. Specific issues were raised with respect to parking, I think that is outside of the scope of Main Street Oregon City as a corporation to be able to solve. There was a parking study done, until that parking study is implemented and we can see how that works, that's a city issue, and I think, yes, we have some input into that, and we have a concern with that, but that parking study was done to address that, and it specifically dealt with an issue that we have that is unique to other cities. We have a courthouse in the middle of our downtown, and other cities don't have that issue. West Lynn does not have that issue. So, we have a parking study, the city paid good money for it. As a taxpayer, I am appalled that that study is still out there. Once it's implemented, then I think it would be perfectly appropriate to come back to organizations such as Main Street Oregon City and others, and see how it's working. As far as the budget, you know, I have to say, I'm a little offended at any sort of comment that Lloyd was quiet because he didn't have a good answer. I think my initial reaction was I was really surprised that that was an issue we were discussing here tonight, because I'm looking at a lot of white paper that's not filled up, and that was the understanding of where I'd be spending my time tonight. Main Street Oregon City has come to this commission on an annual basis and made plenty of reports as to the budget. I worked with Lloyd on that budget to try and scrape together enough of a budget to pay a staff person to satisfy stakeholders in our committee or in our downtown. And, to be honest, that was something that one of your commissioners brought to us, that gee, if we could give some more help to the business owners, couldn't we try to do that? So we really did stretch our budget to try and do that. But that's not what we're here to discuss tonight. I don't think, I think we're here to talk about how we can work together to really accomplish some things that are good for both downtown, and by extension, the city overall. So if we could really focus on that, I would really, really love to see that. And I think things like tourism may be beyond the scope of what we can do tonight, I don't know, maybe that's something that, you know, we could address in future work sessions. I think the board has been more than willing to do that, but, boy, let's make good use of this time while we have it.
I think I made the best use of it, actually.
Exactly.
I think I brought up the most points and the most concerns.
I think that's right.
And I think it's a fair question for us to ask that, of the budget question.
And I'll have some comments, but in fairness, he went through a lot of, a lot of things here, and I think many of those things are going to fit on the short and long-term list. It's the case of, he's had a lot of things, and that's why it's important to go through that.
Excuse me, can I say one thing, too?
Well, you're on, and I prefer to get to the board people.
Okay, I wanted to just do one thing.
Okay.
I think that this night came to, you know, everybody's got a different opinion of what's happening this night, and to me, this is the perfect time to ask questions.
Yeah, that's fine. Mike, would you pronounce your name, because I think I butchered.
It's Gavazza.
Gavazza, thank you.
Pretty close.
I think I put another consonant in there.
You know, I'm kind of going to go against what Terry wants, because I wanted to address the budget real briefly, being the treasurer of Main Street Oregon City. I just wanted to say that, you know, in my understanding, you know, I participated in approving that budget that included Ethan on that, and I did not see at any point in time the striking of any type of events or activities. A lot of these events and activities are somewhat self-funded or separately funded. You know, the city provides a little bit of funding for the First City Celebration, you know, separate from the EID, and this is my limited understanding, I've only been there six months, you know, with this board, so we never had to have a discussion of, oh, we're going to have to give up this or that, and, you know, like the Art Walk, it's been talked about quite a bit, and it was loved by a lot of people, and it was sad to see it go, we just couldn't get the participation and the energy to do it. I mean, that's part of the problem there, is that, you know, we're all a bunch of volunteers, and we're business owners, and we can't do this full-time. You know, we count on these volunteers, and therefore, there really was a need, you know, Lloyd was at the top of his, he was full. In order to continue to proceed with the mission of the organization, we felt that this was a good time to bring in somebody to help make it work. You know, granted, if the city's contribution is drastically cut, it's going to be difficult, but, you know, that wasn't factored as being cut. You know, I wasn't aware of that.
It wasn't factored as being cut?
No, not as being cut.
See, that bothers me.
For this budget period?
For any budget period.
Yeah, I think the assumption that it's always going to be there is the wrong assumption to make when you're making a budget.
Well, but I'm not saying that it wouldn't work, I'm saying it would be tight.
I just, the fact that it wasn't considered is concerning.
It would be very tight on doing that, but then again, too, the objective of having another person on board is to try and obtain more grant funding.
Absolutely.
To keep moving forward, rather than being static at one position. I mean, if we don't try to progress, it's never going to happen. So therefore, you know, it could be considered a risk to go ahead and take on somebody else right now to try and make this happen. I mean, you know, the hope is to get more grant funding, and that would allow, you know, we've got to get grants that allow for overhead, too, right? I mean, we've got to keep the organization running, which is what we're hoping to fund Ethan's position with, moving forward.
Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
A couple of things, I think Ethan's position is important. How is budgeted, how is budgeted, I think is a fair question, but the point is, we have Eric Underwood taking a lot of time on the Main Street program, he's got a lot of other things that he needs to deal with, and so I think it's critical that the Main Street staff are the lead people in dealing with this issue, and devote more of Eric's time to, actually, you know, Beaver Creek Concept Plan and other things that are just as critical to us in many ways. I wanted to come back to the Art Walk and so forth. They're volunteer-based, and when you have somebody who's really devoted for it, it goes forward. Unfortunately, we had the President of Trag pass away during that period of time, and he was a driver, and you know as well as I do how hard it is, unless you've got somebody that can make the long-term commitment to get it going, they oftentimes drop off, and I'm not blaming the Main Street program at all for that.
Absolutely, no.
Because I surely agree with you that, our modern art, that sometimes I can interpret, and sometimes I can't, or I do it wrongly, or whatever, those murals that really tag on to the history is really important, tourism is important, but I believe I see a lot more people that are from our general community going down to the restaurants on Main Street and so forth, so I think we've seen a big draw in that particular area. And there's something that's maybe not specifically Main Street, but I like to see this drive go, and maybe that can be even the long-term, to go up into our Seventh Street corridor. I mean, we're seeing the success on Main Street, and we should be able to draw that further up onto the Seventh Street corridor in terms of a long-term effort, and I wanted to throw that out. And I guess the North End development, we take as more of a long-term piece, although we have some, I hope some short-term, I hope we can see some pieces of our property on the North End actually develop interest for procurement of the kind of design we want, but that's the one point, we do have some control, Rocky, as I think, is on those properties that we own, and to drive the design standards to there.
Doug, what would North End, this is me being a facilitator or a co-facilitator of this meeting, the idea, the discussion point of our North End infrastructure improvement or development, in the minds of the community leaders at this table, what is that, I need to delve into that a little more before I know what role Main Street Oregon City plays, what are we, what are you thinking about, or what is everybody thinking about?
Well, the adaptive research, the adaptive, adaptive.
Adaptive reuse?
Adaptive reuse piece is good on our other end.
Correct.
But I would say in terms of new development, I think we could ride that in terms of what we expect in terms of the properties that we own, is to see whether we can get some residential there as part of the new development.
So following the format we were trying to evolve here, I'm going to put something like development of city property in the North End as a.
Well, it's something that we, you know, the Urban Renewal Commission, I should say, well, in some cases, some properties, we, as a city commission, too, have some, can give some direction in terms of what we want to see there, and the residential piece on the upper stories, it seems to me, is something that we have more, I don't know if control is the word to use, but more input on.
What about the, I'm going to delve down, pardon me, one more level to get a little more out of this discussion on this point, North End development, besides just property development?
Well, I think Commissioner Roth has brought this up in a couple, we've got a couple of great places, we've got Spicer's down there, we've got Tony Fish Market, but we don't have a, you know, a good place where you could generally buy groceries down in that area.
So on here, put up something like downtown grocery?
Well, some, whether it's on Main Street, whether it's on Washington Street, whether it has the potential of developing in the Oregon City Shopping Center, so I guess I have a hard time saying where it ought to go, it ought to go where it will work.
Just so we don't have to cross the bridge to get to it.
You mean Gladstone?
You know about Westland in this case.
So constrained by Fifth to Fifteenth, the way that these community leaders are thinking about it.
In one sense, I agreed with Rocky and his, I'm going to use first names, he's a lot more comfortable, Rocky in terms of those bookends on the other side, because the transportation links are somewhat constrained by Abernathy Creek and so forth, but particularly at the Cove side, where I visualize that becoming a main public transportation link coming right along the Cove and back into Main Street, I think that has more potential of being tied into Main Street than, say, a major center there on the landfill. I think that's going to be a regional pole, but I think it's going to be less of a tie to Main Street. But I guess that whole area there, in terms of having a food center that's going to, that has to be tied in, I think, to the residential piece. I mean, one thing they want to do is buy food when they're living there, and they can't, probably most of them can't afford to go to restaurants every night, and so that's one piece, I just don't know, that's probably a more longer-term piece, but that's something we have to look at.
And that's what I'm trying to do, is just get some of these ideas down.
Yeah.
You've zeroed in from a topic of discussion of North End infrastructure development down to something a little more specific, the development of public property in the North End, and I'm going to go ahead and put downtown grocery.
Yeah.
That's a point of discussion to continue on.
Yeah. It's a point that Kathy's made on a couple of points, and a place that she wants to go when she doesn't live down on Main Street, but the point is, from the residential standpoint, I think it would be a major service.
Right. Other?
And Paul.
It's my turn.
Yeah.
Yeah, all right.
Betty.
So I'm still in sponge mode right now, I just joined the organization and rocked my head around it. All the stuff you brought up, Rocky, that's amazing, I'm really interested in hearing about all these special issues that Oregon City faces. One of the things that I do want to, and I have a hard time speaking for everyone on the board, because I'm new and I don't know exactly everyone's motivations, but I joined the board for Oregon City, not for the organization of Main Street. Main Street doesn't exist to keep itself alive, it actually exists to help Oregon City. So the thing is, is we're, all those problems you listed, they're Oregon City problems, they're not Main Street problems, but Main Street was built to help with these kind of problems, and we're more of an organization made as a think tank and an action committee where people can get together, share ideas, and come up with plans to tackle these things. So, I mean, really, we're here at the pleasure of the city, we're here as kind of your army to go out there and help solve some of these problems for you guys, so what I'd like to see is, instead of defending what Main Street is here to do and why we exist, is to, is to sit down with you guys and say, what can we do for you? You know, what can we do as a group of intelligent civic-minded business owners? So that's kind of where I'm coming from with this, and I would like to get together with you guys and go over some of these lists and maybe put them on the board for us to consider and come up with some plans for attack.
Thank you, Paul. You said a lot of what I was going to say saves me time, because I know we have another meeting to get to here tonight, so I'm going to make my comments very short, because I thought what you said was perfect, and I would really like to bring us back together for a longer period of time, where we can dive into more of your white sheets, because as Terry did say, there's a lot of white on the white sheet, so I would really like to come back together and hear more from the board.
Can do that. Carol.
Well, I would like to add a couple of things quickly to those white sheets, because my mom mind, I like to have things that I can check off, and maybe some things that we could accomplish with limited resources fairly quickly. One thing that was brought up of interest is more, being in the short term, is Amtrak, Amtrak stops, more stops, that could, you know, help spur development and just provide a service.
Bring visitors.
Bring visitors.
With wallets.
A service, so, and then another one, under the short term, is Lloyd said they've already been purchased, are the kiosks that are going to be located downtown, and they just have to be, find locations for, and they would include, like the map that Ethan's working on, or other promotional things. So I think that that's something that could be implemented fairly quickly, yes.
Display cases.
Display cases.
Okay.
Thank you for that, display cases. That's something that's, you know, tangible, that would help the visitors right now and citizens locate things, make sure that you know what is around you, the businesses, and help, you know, facilitate some marketing there. Another is, as far as the short-term parking, I appreciated Paul's comments, how, you know, we are integrated and working together, so as greater city problem is also, or challenge, I should say, is also Main Street's challenge. Parking lot with like a shuttle or something, maybe the trolley shuttling people back and forth, short-term, that would be the short-term, the long-term would be looking for partnerships, and this is one of my passions, for long-term parking.
Is that one?
That would be long-term, yeah. And then another thing I wanted to say is, I'm very pleased to see an evolution of the board, to be independent and to use, you know, additional resources with, you know, Ethan, so that freed Lloyd up to obtain grants, to be more independent, and opportunities, and also the increased communication to, with businesses and economic support that's appropriate with the organization's mission. So I'm very encouraged.
Before I go on to Rocky, again, I would put over the Amtrak over to the long-term. I was just going to say, John Lewis and I just attended a meeting of the leadership group that's dealing with passenger rail system. I think it's highly unlikely, because this is intended to be links between cities, that you're going to get Amtrak stopping at very many locations, maybe only one in Oregon City, so you might at one point.
If we get to that.
If we even get to that point, that's exactly.
Mr. Mayor, you remember, two years ago, the commission asked us to send a letter to Amtrak, and I believe you, and then the then-council president signed it.
Mm-hmm.
That was before Commissioner Pauli started, so we've tried that, I'm not saying we shouldn't keep trying, I'm only mentioning that it has been tried fairly recently, and the railroad did get back to us and say that they didn't fit with the ridership that they were experiencing, but that doesn't mean it wouldn't change.
I'll just make a statement, they're going into a public meeting mode, and I just mentioned that, and please bring it up at our next commission meeting, there is going to be a public meeting open to the public in Oregon City on the 15th of January, dealing with passenger rail. So we'll get that on our list.
Well, we could always move the Amtrak to the dream sheet also.
Yeah, that's right.
Let's not mark off possibilities, you never know what can happen.
Okay, then, Rocky, go ahead.
Do you have a time on the meeting?
I don't know the time, it's the 15th. Yeah, I presume the evening.
So I guess the question I have is, when are we meeting again?
Yeah.
And the, I don't want my comments to necessarily be taken the wrong way, the frustration that I think I have myself is that all these entities are supposedly working together, but we've never worked together. You know, we can't work together, I think I've made it to one Main Street meeting in four years, partly because I work during the day and I don't have the ability to go to any meetings, so, you know, unless we set up a regular basis where we have a discussion, I don't think we can, you know, in order for Main Street to work with what we're doing, we all have to be on the same page, and we can't do that unless we constantly meet, and I think once a year is not enough, and I think this is, I don't know, this may be, have we had another, have we had a work session with Main Street, ever? I think this, one.
Yeah, we had, I think it was about a year ago.
It's very rare. I know we have presentations about, and reports and stuff, but I think that's what's so frustrating, even when we spend two days focusing on our goals, we don't even accomplish that, and then at a meeting, when we have an hour, we give comments that staff takes us a certain way in our regular meetings that aren't what we were saying at all, because we don't have enough time to go through it and actually work it out. You know, unless we give up a whole day to talk about it and meet, or meet on a regular basis as a work session like this, I don't know how we are going to be successful in kind of aligning what we're doing, and so I would greatly encourage us to try to figure out a time where we can meet at least a couple times a year, or if not more. I know that our schedules are all insanely crazy, but I think it's such a crucial, what we're doing on Main Street has been done probably three times in my lifetime. I remember the ups and downs. Okay, well, Margie's slightly older than me, so she remembers five. So this is not a new thing, this is not a new place for Main Street to be at, you know, this has happened before. I think we've made a lot of progress in this recent upclimb, but my point is, this has to be the last. I mean, we have to keep going up. We don't have many more chances to get this right, and we don't, and what happens on Main Street is going to set the tone for this entire city, and if we let it go back, and that's why I'm not praising them, but even the back, the back step of, you know, creating a great event and then seeing it just visually as a decrease back another year, it's a step backward, and we can't take steps backwards, we can only go up, and I think unless we take the time as a city, urban renewal, economic development, Main Street, tourism, everybody in this city together, it's not going to happen. So how do we find the time to do it? That's the problem.
Rocky, one ace you had. Rocky, one, one ace you have in your sleeve as a city commission is you have a-
I got nothing in here.
Yeah, yeah, no, you have, you have a liaison on the Board of Directors-
Touring, yeah, yeah.
To Main Street Oregon City. So, part of, we could see, and I don't wanna surprise you or, or this, but part of the role is, as a liaison, is maybe doing some of that where it happens more recurring and organically so that we're not taking the time of one, of a dozen-
Right.
Volunteers. We can do that.
Well, or cross collaborate. I mean, I'm representing in, in Tourism Commission and meeting with and cross connecting that way too. I don't know, but I think we need to brainstorm just that. How, how does that communication continue forward?
Keep in mind also, it's the format of Main Street Oregon City as a, that four-point approach that it might not necessarily be the Board of Directors you're meeting with.
Right.
You can, if you all want to meet together more, I'm happy to be here to help continue to facilitate those things. But it might be specific subgroups, task forces on specific issues.
Yes.
The Board of Directors are the corporate officers. Uh, they all have projects they care about and will lead, but they're not the only ones. So there might be other groups that still have the downtown program backing them to do what you're talking about.
And I would, I would greatly encourage us to invite all of you to our weekend getaway at the, where is it?
Pioneer Center.
Pioneer Center, um, where we talk about our goals.
And those dates are? January 11th.
And 12th.
January 11th and 12th. Yes, thank you for that invitation. I was gonna hit it if you did.
Mayor. I hate to interrupt, but we, I mentioned to my board member, sorry, that-
Yeah, well, we, we're, we're fifty minutes, but, uh, as soon as Kathy finishes, I'll join, join. I got her on the list. Go ahead, Kathy.
Okay, but mine is just real quick. I wanted to say thank you to Pete, you, all of you for, uh, coming tonight and, and helping us with this. And believe me, we know about how much volunteering takes out of your lives. So, thank you.
Well, thank you very much, Anna. I'm, and Rocky mentioned it, you're welcome to our goal-setting. You have last words before?
I was gonna say, as, as far as bringing this back, I, I think we should definitely do it after our goal-setting session.
Absolutely.
We're gonna have a little more foundations to where we wanna go.
Yeah, I agree.
Roll up our sleeves again after that, maybe in February. And then, maybe in the effort to meet more times than once a year, we do one during the summer. It's a little lighter, just kind of a check-in, update, progress report on what we agreed upon at the beginning of next year, at the, what we agreed upon at the beginning of the year.
Um, on that, one last thing if I could, Lloyd, is there, is there, um, for lack of a better term, is there a subcommittee or, uh, I know we have, you're a representative for Main Street at some of our tourism meetings in general. Um, and, but I don't know if tourism is, um, a topic that the board necessarily discussed or has a, a break-off group that, that's been talking about. But I, I get the feeling a little bit because of a brochure that's being talked about and, and things that have happened. Um, so, if there is an, and maybe Ethan's the right person to, to have, to be a part of that discussion because as we go forward with the chamber and, um, you know, February, you know, the first of the year, uh, this is gonna be, this upcoming summer is a, a major, uh, way to show if Oregon City's gonna be successful in tourism in the future. I mean, our downtown is ready to go. We've got some things in place, ready to bring people in. At the same time, we have some problems with museum being closed and some other things. We have to be on the same page and we have to look at OCCIT, how we use that money and the money that we get from the county tourism to say, what is it does this community wanna focus on as a group to bring people in now that our town's done? And I, I think, um, you know, if you're not a part of that discussion, um, somehow we need to make sure that that connection and I'm, Amber's shaking her head too, so I think that's, I don't want us to lose that connection in, in, in moving forward.
Rocky, I was, I just wanna mention that that's probably gonna come up in our retreat conversation-
Okay, a little bit.
With the citywide marketing that I put on the agenda. And then, uh, I have a feeling that, you know, the Main Street Oregon City organization could be a facet of that, citywide.
So if any, if you can get there to that meeting, you know, at least if we have an agenda, once we have our agendas, it might be good to send that out to say, okay, this is the time of day so you don't have to sit through the whole weekend.
Right, right, right.
But I think that would be a good discussion for Ethan to be a part of as well. Cool, great.
Well, again, thank you all for coming and again, extended the invitation to any of you attending our goal-setting. We'll, we'll be broader, primarily a commission discussion, but we do, we do invite comments, so.
Good.
Thank you. With that, we're gonna adjourn and come back in about ten minutes, quarter till, half hour late.